Thursday, June tenth, twenty twenty-one, seven P M. Meeting to order for the Dunbar Board of Selectmen. We have a full board this week, and we have the town administrator, transfer station. We're gonna call you the head of the transfer station, I guess. Department head, and Leo Martell is recording for the benefit of the public, and Linda Nickerson will upload it to our town website and to YouTube. Bob, do I have a?
Yeah, a motion to approve the minutes on the May twenty-seventh meeting isn't ended.
I'll second your motion, like you abstaining because you aren't here?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, that is on YouTube, it worked.
Yeah. I will sign them with Linda bringing in, I guess, unless she's stuck in her net file.
It's uh?
We didn't know these?
Oh, she went in the beginning.
Oh, she did, okay, I didn't hear, sorry. Okay, motion made, second, all in favor? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment before we start the rest of town business. Anybody in the room have anything for public comment?
Nothing, just Leo.
Yep.
You have not offered the meeting, then that's over.
Okay, I'm gonna start going down through the agenda, we have a bunch of stuff, it's not large items, there's stuff we need to go over. I'm gonna make a motion that we keep our previous transfer station employer employee on call, Ed Wooten. We've already used him for setups on there, and Woody brought it to our attention that he'd like to keep on for Saturdays, and Ed also made some mention to us that he'd like to come back for the winter months, pretty heavy when we were out voting for him, so I'm not sure if he's passed that long to you, but.
We haven't had him extended, though.
Yeah, he is willing to come back this winter, it doesn't look like he's gonna be working at his new job, and I gotta say, he misses all the everybody down there. This is seeing the town people, so.
What rate are you gonna have him at?
Um, we're gonna leave him at his current rate now, and that's why we're gonna keep him on, I think.
I think that's, because we just hired an assistant manager, though.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have two assistant manager rates, or would be step three, attended step three?
I don't know how close those are.
He has attended step three before.
That's why. And we already had moved him to that, so.
It doesn't make sense to keep him at that rate level, what do you think? I thought the rate that he was at wasn't a three.
No, no, I'm saying his job title's not assistant. He was at level one assistant manager rate, but the reason he wanted to stay on and not come on and off, so that he'd keep his rate.
Yeah, but the thing is, the rate, he's not being paid at that, with that responsibility, he just hired a person with that responsibility, Bob, what do you think?
He's got C D L, so there is two differences.
The new guy's a C D L rating, the only other thing I'd like to say is, uh, he's an employee that never needs any training, and substantial amount of winter plowing help for Woody.
Yeah, that would be, uh, his one plus, is that you can have him coming, you don't have to.
Four o'clock in the morning, he's there.
Well, and just if he can come in, cover a shift or something, you don't have to explain anything to him, he knows the equipment, he knows what needs to be done, he just can do it, you know what I mean?
Just like someone that's satisfied with doing that work in the wintertime, which we don't know if we're gonna have everybody coming in in the wintertime, so I'm just trying to think off the boxes. Rather than saying what the rate is applicable to, bring him back at the current rate that he was receiving.
Yeah, that's what.
I don't have a problem, because we could do it that way, I'd rather not lose him.
Okay.
It gives us a guy on the weekends that we don't have right now.
Right.
And we don't even know if whoever we hire is gonna work out.
I just wanna make sure, as a manager, are you comfortable with that? Yeah, he just, I think we need to explain, or I'll expect him that he wouldn't be coming in, he would not be the assistant, but then I think he's aware of that. Okay, we'll keep him at the, what we're proposing here is keep him at the rate he left. I think that's fair, I mean, he has a ton of experience.
Okay.
Like I said, you don't have to, I don't have to show him nothing, he knows. I just, if you're comfortable with it. Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
And you won't have to keep buying a pair of boots and then they disappear.
I mean. Okay, and then I'll withdraw. We're not charging a lot of money now, there's something like that, it's not a lot of money. Okay.
So, someone make a motion?
I made the motion.
There's no second.
One second, sorry. Just so we're clear and it's on board, you have that now, because he did hand in a resignation paperwork, even though we were kind of in the talks and wanted him to continue on, so.
I mean, his work ethic was just to even up the election day, I mean, he worked, hard work. That's indicative type of work.
There's, there's a value to that.
Yes.
He brings a lot of, a lot of momentum to the whole crew when he's there, he enjoys it, so.
We need to vote on it.
Well, motion made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that, most left out, Mike?
It's all right, it's all right.
Okay, now, the next thing I want to bring up is a request from Woody to increase the boot budget. Under the personnel plan now, we have a hundred and fifty for our boot budget. Looks like he just had a new employee get a pair of boots from the vendor that comes by, then it'll one sixty-six fifty. He'd like to move that up to one seventy-five for all new employees, and so I'd like to open that up for discussion. You know, there is, you know, how long has been one fifty at long, quite a long time?
No. I mean, well, I, not for those guys, because I've been one fifty for quite a while, I mean, it's almost since I've been hired, I actually think since I've been hired as a whole time, so it's been almost twenty years.
Well, we just added it to part-time.
We just, exactly, it was added to part-time as.
At the same rate.
Exactly, and last year, I had mentioned this, because last year, when we got, we got our boots last time, he's like, it was tough for him to sell it to us at the one fifty, you know, because costs have gone up, they do give us a considerable discount on them. You know, they come, and now the thing is, in the computer, there's no, I can call him and say, hey, I need boots, and he'll say, you want the last one you had? Yep, it's already in the computer, there's no, no issue if they discount, but now the price, like everything else, has gone up.
Question, what type of boot does he provide?
He provide, he can, you can get Timberlands, Chipolos, Keen, it's, it's like half a dozen different brands. And he brings out, and they're all right in that same ballpark, they're the OSHA-approved safety shoe, um, some have the composite shanks, some have steel shanks, some have the composite toe, steel toe. It all depends on what brand, what make, and what's comfortable on your foot, you know, sometimes you get a, like for me, for instance, Chipolos don't work good on my feet, they hurt my feet. Some Timberlands hurt, so you gotta kinda, you find a size and a shoe that fits your foot. There are some differences in how the steel toes fit as well. And then really you get insulated or not insulated, you kind of think, you know, the other way I look at it, you ask the guy to keep a pair of boots for a year, Woody must keep a pair of shoes for a year. And maintain them and, you know, wear them for a year, it's tough. I mean, I talked with another town, just in general conversation, it was nothing official, and I said, hey, what do you guys do? They were up to two fifty for a pair of boots, um, he said they could actually buy multiple boots in that, with that two fifty, I don't, I'm not looking at that, I just want to bump it up a little, so the guys can get a decent pair of shoes that, you know, you're on the concrete, you're on the asphalt for eight, ten hours a day, just something decent, you know, that's all we're looking for.
I don't really have an issue with it, I know that when I first was brought on as a selectman, um, it was said to me that we give the one fifty towards it, if they want more expensive pair, we want them. But if the cheapest ones you're finding out there are one sixty-six fifty, I don't have a problem going to one seventy-five, it's not a huge amount of money. And now we are doing it as a requirement more than before, as part of their job, so.
The thing is, though, because I looked at the Red Wings and the Chipolos, they're up over two hundred.
Yeah, Red Wings.
Timberland, the OSHA ones, you're gonna get aluminum, or you can get steel toe shoes, those are under a hundred and fifty.
Really?
Yeah, Carolina boots are just a bit about under a hundred and fifty, so I don't, I think we might wanna, I think we should pick up the difference in the cost of this, but we need to discuss this a little bit more than.
The thing is, it may be, you may end up having to shop with a different vendor than having the guy come there and shop there, because, you know, you can buy a lot of things in, that are cheaper places.
Yeah, it's, it's, I know it's a convenience, Woody, but I, I even checked with Joe Kings, and you can get some of the Carolina boots, you can get the Timberland for less money than the hundred and seventy, you know, that has sixty-one. So I think we should be paying for the guy's boots, you know, I don't think that should come out of his pocket, it's one of the things that happen when you're using a sole source, and that's, you know, makes it easier for you.
Definitely easier.
At the same time, we may, we may wanna kind of discuss and see, when you set a number, and then it's up to the individual to use that number, and if he can't get the boots through your source, use whatever source, because they are out there, you know? And I have to say one thing, I always wore Herman Survivors for my boots, which I still have a pair, it hasn't worn out, but I bought a pair of the Skecher with the aluminum toe, and it was more comfortable than the boots I wore for over thirty years in construction.
Um, so where do we wanna go with this, we wanna go to the one seventy-five, or just pay this one bill at one sixty-six fifty for now?
Pay that one for now, we can discuss this a little further, you know, and see if, if we're gonna raise it, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna.
We can include that in the next year's budget, too.
Okay. So, motion on the table for Bob is to pay this one sixty-six fifty, the difference between that and one fifty for this employee we just hired full-time, not full-time, but as a part-time C D L driver and manager. And so, you wanna say your motion, Mike?
I'll second that.
Motion made, second in all favor?
Aye. Let's go, we take it before you move.
Hold on.
This is something we don't wanna drag, because you have three more guys coming for shoes, like, very shortly.
Okay.
Within, let's say, the next couple of months.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do a little research on it, and we'll bring it up, maybe as, like, in the meeting or two away.
Yeah.
They're every two weeks now, so.
I mean, I know, I just, none of this doesn't play a lot of role, but I know for like me, they're specialty sizes. We're not all certain sizes, I'm a specialty size.
He lines like a triple wide, which I think might be more expensive that way, too, so.
It's something to consider, you know, because you can look at one thing and go, yeah, you can get this, but then you gotta look into sizes, and that'll change it.
I'm gonna sign these minutes before I forget, we made a motion on the minutes, we. Okay, we're just gonna make a notice of a meeting, we've got a special meeting coming up, Kelsey Road Turnaround, to discuss winter plowing, where we're gonna turn the trucks around, that's scheduled for this coming Monday at four P M.
Could be a location changer.
Right, we did get a, I got an email today from Mike asking that the meeting be held at onsite, that way it's clear and there's no confusion with.
Do you try and do that with Joe?
Yeah, I will, he said he would be available, but I did, I, he hasn't seen the agenda yet, so I will make sure he gets that.
Okay.
So are you folks okay for me?
On site?
I think.
I think that's probably a good idea, it's that way we, with Jeff being here, it's delineated exactly what we're gonna be doing.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if this is gonna be an end-on meeting or just a preliminary start to the process.
I'd like to make it, be done in thirty minutes or less, I think we can do it, I'm being optimistic.
Yeah.
So I'll go ahead and advertise that it'll be held at Kelsey Road.
On site.
And that's open to the public.
Open to public.
Yep.
Okay. Change of the notice. Okay, we have to approve an appointment paper, or make a motion for George Maskill for the Old Home Day Committee, so I'll make a motion. To accept Georgie Maskill with Dunbar Old Home Day Committee, terminating March twenty-twenty-two. Second?
Second.
Second, by Bob, in all favor?
Aye, aye. I related to that, we have an Old Home Day this year, I heard rumors going, being flawed about, August, September, date's not shown, what's the story?
I don't, I think they're gonna come in front of us, Mike, but I think they're still working on that.
Okay.
I heard the same thing.
Okay, please.
And it sounds like it's upbeat, some people don't have it, and I think, if it ever keeps going, we can do that. Woody, since you're here, I'd like to go over this with you, on the Indeed website, I didn't have a chance to read them yet either, but we've got three or four applications here, have you had time to go through any of them yet?
I looked at them, I spoke with Lee like a week ago, and I looked at, like, out of the four that I got, I think there was one that was a possibility. And I, I also let her know that, you know, you, when you and I talked about, you wanted to find somebody who not just pulling in off the street, you know, okay, I'm gonna hire you, you know, wanna find somebody that's more qualified, more in line, rather than just keep bringing someone off the street, they wear for six months, they take it off, you know? Yeah, I only saw one that was really stood up, and I wanted to know.
All right, I'll review them too, if we have the, if we have the same person in mind, then we'll interview that person and take it off Indeed for the period of time. And try and get that going.
Yeah.
And we'll have an interview with that person, like you said, um, we're not a hundred percent caught up, we're caught up enough to the point where we can try and get a decent person, not just take anybody in.
I mean, so you gotta be careful about going on this website a lot.
Indeed?
Yeah, because I went on there to get, you know, rates of different pages and stuff, and then I got a thing in the mail from Indeed with a seventy-five dollar coupon to put my first sand in. So you only must be tracking it.
Give that to Lee.
I wish I could have, you know?
He's late.
So I'll review those, Lee, and if you remind me.
You wanna take those home? Is it easier to do?
Yeah.
Because I have them on my computer.
Oh, that's awesome.
And then Woody has them, and it's in the box.
Put them on my spare gears. All right, so I'll review them, Woody, if we're on the same page, we'll try and get that going, so we can get rid of that.
Yeah, really, whether towns already had an account with them, I don't think I can give you my coupon.
I'm reading a correspondence, we got a request a few weeks back about a raffle for Pioneer Sportsman. Sporting Forge Club, yeah, and it looks like we've got some information here back from the police department in reference to it. And they were asking if we had a permit for these, or we're gonna give them permission to do it, and you guys all had a chance to read it?
I didn't. It was on, it was on email, Bob.
It was on email a while back, why don't I give this to you, so you read it, and we'll go on to another subject.
So basically, there's an RSA that allows them to do that, even if the town doesn't have anything in place, like a catalyzer's license, or a permit, or that type of thing? But they do need to get permission from the board in the event you don't have anything in place to get, issue a permit through, like, the building department, and that's under the RSA.
Yeah, and, you know, it was like a nonprofit organization, it is Pioneer, um, Sportsman Club is there in town.
In the benefit for H I P S, it seems very popular.
Yeah, it does, I don't have an issue with it. I'll let you read it first, Bob, and then we'll.
I may have, and it's just, because I mean, emails are.
I'm going to, um, our town clerk dropped off Dunbar's election results. We had a total number of ballots that were cast for us, was seven hundred and forty-nine in the town of Dunbar. Total limbs on the checklist was twenty-three forty-seven, so we had a very good turnout, and Christopher Lins, the Republican, got four hundred and nineteen votes, and Muriel Hall got three hundred and twenty-eight votes in Dunbar. Linda also gave me the results from Bo, since this was just between Bo and Dunbar, and Woody for these people, they had twenty-five hundred and sixty-one voters, including their absentees, and they had sixty-six hundred and twenty-nine people on their checklist. So, Christopher Lins got nine seventy-four, and Bo and Muriel Hall got fifteen eighty-four, and there was one rated. So those are the election results, and with just those two towns, it looks like Muriel Hall won.
The record changes from due by hand counting?
I think this town, like, they changed it, and they counted by hand, you know, at least that's what Mary Beth said.
And to make a comment on the election?
Sure can.
It was well-run, real, well-run election, from setup to the process and end, and the day, and I would like to call up, thank you to Mr. Fred Mullins, who came out of retirement, to help facilitate that. And I think, I think it'd be appropriate that maybe we drop a letter from the board, and say a letter of appreciation and thank you to Mr. Fred Mullins, and maybe we can grab it, we could have that signed.
Yeah, and I'd like to also extend that same gratitude in a quick letter to John Trotty for stepping up to, uh, the plate for a.
Assistant moderator.
Assistant moderator, because that's not a, a position or a job that people wanna fill in.
It was a full day for those two, generally.
Yeah.
Lee, can you handle that?
Okay. But I think it was very well-run, and everybody was very respectable, and.
In the public, I tell you, they appreciate it, not have to wear masks.
I think I had more people come up and say, you know, we appreciate the work you guys do on these elections than I, than other ones, so, it was nice to see. So, thanks for that follow-up on that, Mike. So, Bob, now that you have a chance to read that, do you?
Yeah.
Do I have to sign it in the calendar?
Yeah, but you should make a motion, and issue him that permit, so that we can.
So I'll make a motion, um, that we allow, under New Hampshire RSA two eighty-seven dash eight, Pioneer Crew five-five-six four-H club, which is hosted by Pioneer Sports League, a New Hampshire nonprofit organization, to run one or more fundraising raffles to support the four-H program here in town.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Okay, you gonna let them know, Lee?
I will, and I'll let Lee know.
Okay. Going to the tree removal here on the common, um, we have a large ash tree over here, couple feet diameter that has died from, I think, the M L Ash Bor. Um, when we were having trees removed at the cemetery, Dow Services, Jeff Crosby had contacted them, get them over to check, they would like to come back and remove that tree for us, I believe their total was nine fifty or nine hundred and sixty dollars, and that's taking down the entire tree, chipping all the limbs, getting all of the small stuff out of there, and Jeff's gonna haul the bigger stuff away. Um, I also got a bid, um, from Skip Trudeau, to grind the stump away, only because I think that it may come as far as the top. So to grind the stump was two hundred and fifty dollars from Skip Trudeau. We would like to proceed with that, they said they could come back in two weeks to cut the tree out.
I have, I like the company, but do we need a second, uh, bid, I mean, Jeff tried to contact three other companies? Okay, okay, good.
And, um, one was real high, two didn't show up.
Okay, with that, I can much reassure you, because when you, you're gonna have that sanity check.
Yeah, no, and he did, so, Jeff did that due diligence, he called me the morning he saw them working.
Yeah, no, in fact, I ran into Jeff, he explained, I got the same information, so I, I think, and the fact they're gonna do a good job, and I'm familiar with the company, it's a good company.
Yeah, they seem to have done a good job of the rest of the work they did. Um, you had something?
Um, so after he grinds that stump, is that gonna be covered in level?
Yeah, we'll fill it in level.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have Jeff take the chips out and then fill it in level, um, he's gonna grind it extra deep for us, and he's gonna grind back some of the roots, so the rest will hopefully just rot in place. I told him I wanted to go deep enough, so if we wanted to replant another tree there, that we could possibly do that.
We can do it right there, but.
But close to.
Okay. So I would say, consensus, I think it's good to go.
Good to go, and the grinding on this stuff, okay.
The guy on the maintenance line?
Yep.
Doesn't have to come on a job, so it should be maintenance.
That's why you can know that's better for him.
Yeah. Will he be in contact with the contractor, Jeff?
I'm not handling it.
Yes, that's what, yeah, let him facilitate it.
He said he would.
Okay, great.
So, um, okay, one other thing Lee brought up to me, um, the fact that this roof might need repairs sooner or later, because more shingles are blowing off it.
It looks pretty shabby, you can go out there and harp a lot, look.
Right.
It looks, we're missing pieces here and there.
I know it's been repaired a couple times since I've been.
Yeah, because all we've done is a, a section of it, it might have been the back side that we did at one point, and then do the front side, I don't know why.
About eleven years ago, when they were talking about solar panels, it was still, it's the same roof from eleven, eleven years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
And they were talking about having to repair it.
Then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can, um, Lee, can we, um, call Central Roof to do that building for us?
Yeah.
And also Keegan, that lives over there, Jeff's.
His braces?
Yeah, just try them too, I think, at least.
What are you thinking of doing, replace the little thing?
I, I think we'd do the whole thing, but if we can, while they're looking at it, see if they think one side's been done earlier than the other, but it'd be nice to have the building done one time with the, both sides, you know?
We should, do you want like thirty-year shingles?
Yeah.
I want like thirty, at least thirty-year shingles.
There'll be like the, um, you know, the thirty-year, they call them, everyone calls them lifetime architectural shingles.
Yes, not ten-year crap.
They don't, the thirty years, they call them lifetime, I don't know why they started that, but one company, well, then now, they call limited lifetime warranty for all of them.
Now, so I compare apples to apples, are we removing the shingles and?
Oh, yeah, I would like to remove them and reapply.
And under paint, underlayment, too?
Underlayment and neutral pitch, and we'd like to do, uh, six feet of pitch of paint at the eaves. And then the rest can be thirty-pound felt.
What was that, how much, how long?
Six feet.
Six feet?
At the eaves. Or pitch of paint.
The sticky stuff.
And thirty-pound felt everywhere else, because I think that's more of something.
Yeah, but they did, they, the installers hated that stuff, because I said, I wanted that tower roof, that would that.
Yeah, I did too on my house.
Yeah. Fun to work with, isn't it?
Yeah, you're very right, so.
They have a different name for it, that's why they have a different name for it.
Ice shield, they call it, is it ice shield?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Lee?
Yeah.
Okay, I did the election results already, we did that.
One other thing on the Butler Town building, did you guys notice the paint on the doors? We need some T L C here.
Right on these doors?
Yeah, we put so many signs up there in front of Coben, they're gonna take them down, the paint pulled, uh, those.
What do we call tablets of paint down there?
Yeah.
Same guy we use. I know, we.
But maybe I can get him to take a look at the, um, library, again, with the columns that.
There's a column?
That are, that's under the ground, too.
Okay, why don't we do them both?
We just need the signs on the door?
I'll expand them.
We were changing them.
And, and the thing is, I saw, speaking of signs on the door, just as corollary, um, are we requiring, or just recommended that we wear masks if you have an accident?
If you have an accident, we're requesting.
See, requesting, but it says required.
I know, I did talk with Todd about that, she says she's got no grief on the requiring. She says she's got no grief on the requiring because people are used to it. But my wording was requesting and Fred Mullin did change it to requesting only because it's a little bit less combative when they're looking at it. So if you get any, as a consensus from the board, if you get any feedback, just change the signs and let them know that we're requesting it. We're far enough along here. I think that the fight is out of a lot of, a lot of this, but yes, it is requesting. I'd like to take a, do a moment of silence at our board meeting. We have a hard time. A person that worked for our town at several different levels volunteered, Eleanor Swindlers passed away. Few, few, not, not this week, but the previous week, yeah.
The Sunday before.
So, just a quick moment of silence for her. Okay. Yeah, while I was at the, at voting, people reminded me of different positions she's helped through the town, volunteering a lot of different things.
She was in the election just most in this last population, helping us a lot in the election. So she's stuck into it, I agree.
Okay, now I'm going to go to the mailbox and All right, I had asked the girls to put some table prices together because the last couple of elections, as Mike has said, that We found that the taller tables, we were liking them and everybody's using them and the people like walking up to them voting. So we had ordered several for us to use and we ended up using them out in the middle there. I figured we may as well get this right and try and take care of it. They were sixty-four ninety-nine each for the four-foot tables that expand up for the height adjustment that we need. And we'd like to get four more of those.
Encourage four more.
You do? Okay. And Bob, you okay with that? Just a consensus and we're going to use the COVID money in the stanchions. Our two thirty-three ninety-nine each, Lynn?
I was talking to Linda about that again. You had mentioned something about getting the order that we had
The first order.
Right.
From what I understand, the first order was a little bit better than the second order.
Correct, so Linda said that when I did the research of the vendor and or emails through Rennie, I recall at one point Rennie had come before the board around the budget time asking to get those for the elections. And you guys authorized that, but I'm almost certain it's at least two years ago that we did that. So I can't find, put my finger on that history, so we have time to
Is this an eight-pack for two thirty-three?
No, it's going to be
Why you say black eight-pack high limit?
Oh, Joe Marie did that, but I have this information which is different. It was nine ninety-nine and that was for fourteen. And then we added
Might keep them consistent, the same type.
Right, so I'm going to do a little bit more research, but we're looking at, how many did you have in mind to get?
Four.
Four more of those as well?
We, we had to tell all but probably two people when those stanchions were just twenty feet away from the door To take the exit, they would stop and turn and look and tell you.
Bob was suggesting a lot of sign, flashing signs and exit in an hour, going this way.
It was so tiring, I just could not believe it.
Sure, again, a certain interruption.
So the four-pack that you saw first, that was what we ordered this last time. So I don't think we're going to go that route again, but Linda and I are going to research it.
I, I would like to give them the latitude to order, especially identified what they want.
Which one, which is the older order?
Okay, four of them, Dave. Bob, you have a consensus for that?
Yeah, the only thing I'm thinking about though is if, if we're going to go back to the old way that we were setting things up, Then it's a new point because you have more than enough. Unfortunately, because we're having them use that far exit door.
Right.
You're almost going to take it all the way to the door. And then somebody at the door
But I'm thinking even if we come up the backside of the curtain bar, we'll have the one layer there, you know, still. And then when you come in front of the check-in table, you know, for the people who want to re-declare as undeclared.
Yeah.
I think we need a line of stanchions there. We don't have, you know. We just kind of let the people may go back through the line where we could move the whole thing this way a little bit, put a line of stanchion so they can come up and then down. But we don't have enough to ever do it, so we don't.
Right, I, I thought, for what he had, if they, you know how they used to set it up?
Yeah.
When you came in, I thought you would almost have, you probably have enough, but it probably wouldn't hurt to have extra ones there.
And we do have
Because you don't want to use those little plastic chains for example.
And you know what? I'm looking here and The last time he bid, he checked thirteen-foot bells and we told him to go with the lower ones, it was six fifty-six for fourteen. They were forty-eight ninety-five, so that is an eight-pack of them for that two thirty-three.
But I think those are the more recent ones from September. You said they were the older order.
Similar pricing though, but yeah, they are the older ones.
That's, that's not
There is another order that was older than that.
I would say if they've sold an eight-pack, to just get us an eight-pack.
Yeah.
With the COVID money?
You know, when you find out, if it's only two thirty-three.
Whether from the COVID money?
So four, four more sets with eight stands.
Eight, eight stand as, as they're sold. So four tables and we'll put down
And use the COVID, the COVID money.
One pack of eight of these.
Requesting that they was COVID money? Yes.
Yes.
Bob, you're a little bit
So I'll put down four of these, four pieces. From these pieces. We've got a memo. We think, we want to keep this private, but you guys will have a chance to see it from FM LA. Okay. Just keeping this private for the hours. Mike brought this in. We've got an update for the Concord Regional Solid Waste Resource Recovery Cooperative. Giving us an update for the board members and I think we're going to send this off to Woody, right?
Yes, for review and recommendation.
Okay.
If any actions needed.
Hoping he hadn't head out before that, but I did see him drive away. So we'll pass that off to Woody.
By the way, that was delivered to my neighbor. They used to get that at the tents, I don't know, ten dollars address. My neighbor borrowed it from me.
That's fine, you're going right direct to the address, huh? Okay, I'm going to bring it back for public comment.
You know, has anybody thought about what to do with that millstone?
Oh yeah, but I have thought about the, the horse, right? Yeah, I think that should come to my house. I've been to a horse.
Where did they, enough, where did they put that?
We can't tell anybody. But it's in a safe spot. We don't want anything Not in a personal residence, seventy-six.
Thing is that I, I was, originally there was some discussion in front of the town, this town building here, but the problem is it's going to be an obstacle to interrupt mowing.
It will. I haven't looked yet, but maybe, why don't we look and come up with some ideas? Maybe in one of the gardens, the, the big round millstone. One of the gardens or by the benches there.
That incline does appear though.
It is, huh?
Yeah, and you know, since it ends up being a clutter after a lot of more stuff.
And we were thinking the hitching post should probably go by the town earth building.
Yeah, that would be most appropriate there. I think there's consensus on that one. Bob, what do you think of that?
As long as Dog doesn't raffle it off.
Oh my gosh, that's funny.
You can hook your horse up, but it's a raffle.
Well, you might rent it out.
Yeah.
For money, yeah.
But yeah, I just thought I'd bring it up because I figured you guys are busy and maybe, you know. It's one of those things you can take your time to think about. It's not a rush, you know.
Yeah, let's take a look and
In front of this one, I think this one, kind of neat.
Could I ask a question about that stone? Is, is it a flat stone?
It's a thick stone.
Okay.
It's one-half to millstone with all of the Yeah, it's round.
So you could stand it on edge, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you could stand it on edge, of course, yeah.
But I don't think this one, I think it's, you may want to lean it back like that a little bit so you can see the cut of the stone and Up on edge like they do, like I have A well-covered. They stain them up, but this is very heavy. I don't know if it's, if it ever did fall over or something, it'd kill them.
Well, they have one at the, at the Historical Society there, where that's set up that way.
It is, okay, I'll take a look at that one.
But you know, you could set it up in that, you're talking about the mowing, you know, and you could again put a bar multi-area around it.
Yes, yeah.
You know, it'd be easy to maintain, you know.
I think somewhere in front of a building, but I think he's worth his life. Stuff at the library.
Yeah, it's, it's getting busy over there.
If you're going to do that, display, put it on display somewhere, are you going to put a plaque, put some history? I mean, I'm thinking, I'm looking at that and I would know what it is.
Right, it would be good to have a small plaque on it.
Yeah, I think that's what we do.
At least history, you know. I thought, my thought was originally when I spoke to the guys, was put it near one of the walkways so people see it as they come in and out.
I, I like, I like that idea. In front of the village, you can see it. You don't need a full history, but it is a small historical plaque, same way as probably
And the year it was starting to use down there.
Was that actually used in Dunbar? Is there a
Yeah, that was one of the millstones right down there.
Then I would, I would ask our historical, you know, committee to come up with some language for us.
I'm sure she would.
Donna?
Yeah.
Are they still trying to get the other one that's I haven't heard any information on it.
She never stops trying, but I think it's kind of taking the backseat for right now.
She's been had a lot of things on her plate lately, so yeah, like he said, he's playing the backseat right now.
Somebody will call her in six months from now and say, hey, we
Soon as things level up, you know, maybe she'll focus again on that, you know. But in the meantime, this one's sitting there waiting to be Right.
I like the idea of a small plaque to say what it is, what it is and what it was used for. And this was in Dunbar millstone.
I mean, you could even do it in the school and there are flowers and the
No, I like the idea. I like it up here.
All the residents come here.
Yeah.
You know, these doors just for parents.
That's right.
Here's all the residents you get to see here.
I like that idea.
And again, that back there, you know, things start getting kind of, you know, you got gardens, you know, things start happening to me all the time. It's kind of bland here except for those paper boxes.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And, you know, those are the only two pieces that we have from that piece of property.
We'll put that on the agenda for next time we meet, we discuss it. We think we can think about it and then come back to the board.
Okay.
Okay, so nothing else could be rushed, maybe it's just
No, but we don't want to forget about it.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the town administrator. Lynn, do you have any thoughts?
I don't have anything to do with this.
Can I bring back to select board, like you have?
Yeah, the thing is, I was listening to the discussion last meeting, I saw it on YouTube about the town forest and Tucker Hill owning a piece of property and residents want to get some trees dropped down there.
That's your
Exactly, and the thing is, it doesn't have any impact on me, but I was thinking that, I read the forester said that would be good to drop the trees, they're very, they're of no value. You drop the trees and it gives habitat for some wildlife, which is fine, but I think any tree dropping should be at the cost of the requesting homeowner Because Dunbar has, there's no value for us to really drop the trees. And the thing is that if someone wants to drop to help his view, it should be, it should be at his cost, his or her cost.
I agree.
My thought on the town land is we shouldn't cut them trees because why would you want to, you know, that is open for the public to walk through. There is a walkway through there.
But I'm saying some
Drop a bunch of trees down there.
Selective cutting based upon the professional recommendation of the town forester. They send those trees out on the rock.
Yeah, but that wasn't a town forest and that was the issue. That was a forester that one of the landowners
Oh, no, 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 now we go
That was offering his services to us, which We weren't looking for. We figured the town forest could take care of their own property, so.
I, I agree with you there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have a problem too having the trees cut on town land.
And just left it, no, doesn't make no sense.
Okay, then in that case, I thought that was our forester making the
Yeah, no.
Okay, then I
I made, Tony also mentioned that it's kind of wetland too.
Yeah.
You know, so that's not a good thing.
That area in the, in the back there is all wet and it does have a walkway through there, but most people don't know where it is.
And I think it's just a small little strip and it is all in wetland on purpose.
Because that opened the door for other people who want to use the town's forest.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Too, you know, so.
That's one of the, one of the subdivisions, this reason why we're working a closer eye on subdivisions. The walking trail has a guardrail right in front of it.
You're right.
Would you ask the town forest committee to go out there and walk it and see what they think?
No, we just gave them the paperwork to
Okay.
I would, I would, before they do anything, I think the town should not be liable for any cost incurred if they decide to go forward with anything.
They're pretty, our town forest people are pretty careful. I don't think you'll see them doing anything.
Okay.
We have a forester, she's related to the, on our committee now.
Okay. All right. That was close when I, so that, that's, it was something I saw and I just wanted to make a comment on it, so thank you, you, obviously as well and under taken care of. Okay, second item is, I do, I said about a month ago, we got the contract I created. I like that, if there's no objection, as written, I'd like to give it the draft to Sergeant, the sergeant So he can talk, lead it over and then come back to us with any recommended changes. I wouldn't move forward with it.
Did we talk about having our attorney review it first?
We can, but the thing is, at this point, I would rather get the input from him than send it to attorney rather than having two, two looksees.
Are you going to interview him?
No, no, the thing is that
You're already doing
We've pretty much made the selection, but we're just, it's fine-tuning the contract. What, what's your idea on that? I would rather have the change happen. I'd go back to the lawyer every time they make changes.
You may want to have Chris look at it, see what objections he has, see where we come to it and then have the attorney
Tell you guys
I, I have not shared the draft. It was to you guys first, then I'm going to send it to him. And there was no rush, so the thing is, I just wanted, I want the green light to go forward.
I guess share the draft with him, but let him know that we are going to have the attorney review.
Oh, absolutely. Just like I would expect him would be doing the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, I wouldn't say, you know, make changes. I'd say, here's, here's our first draft and
In fact, this is close to my final draft. Come back to me. The thing is, I don't foresee any, any major issues. We, we sat down
Didn't sound like it.
No, we sat down, I sat down with him for about an hour and we hashed through a few issues and the thing is, it was some give and take. And at the end of the day, I said I would make the changes and as soon as you guys gave me the green light, I would give him the draft to go forward with.
Should we have a A board meeting to bring him in and talk about the job?
Only after he goes through the contract. Now, I don't think He feels comfortable with the job already, the salary, benefits, hours and all, supervision, all that kind of stuff. It's not terribly different from a previous contract. We, it's tweaked. Especially in salary and benefits. There's a few things we add, a few things we subtract. But I think it's, I'm, I feel like ninety-five to ninety-eight percent there. And I want to see his input and then if we have, if his input's reasonable, we drop, run it by our lawyer for just one time and make it happen.
Okay. I'm amenable to that. On the hiring processes, Lynn said we should have in front of the board.
Oh, the
For the formal hiring.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely. But the thing is, at this point, we're just going back and forth with the contract. When we're ready to, when it's ready for our signatures, we bring him in.
Do you see anything we're doing wrong with that, Lynn? Any step we're going by that we shouldn't be?
I don't know. I'm, I don't know that I've seen a contract being offered before we interviewed the individual.
Well, we kind of interviewed him indirectly. In the sense that
So that was your position as the consensus to
As a board.
As a board, to talk to him and engage him for the position.
And stick with the current employee instead of going out to I don't, I don't have a problem with it because he's already doing the job pretty much.
But the thing is, it's going to be confided in a, in a contract. And the contract, just to look, remember the wording of it is, the start date will be one January twenty-two Or sooner mutually agreed to by selectmen and sergeant, and the sergeant.
One January or sooner?
Correct.
January first or sooner?
Or, in other words, it could be
One January or another?
No, one January twenty-two, start date, or sooner, mutually agreed to. I lost, you lost me.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, I, thank you for the green light. That's all my.
Anything else, Bob?
You don't have much to say, because I had this now, there's the police contract, I was gonna bring it up also, and, you know,